Okay, the time is 7:52 and that meeting is adjourned.
That's it.
That meeting.
The time is 7:52. I'll call to order a meeting of the City of Emeryville's accessory agency to the Emeryville Redevelopment Agency. Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Here.
Councilmember Martinez?
Here.
Councilmember Pats?
Still here.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Here.
And Mayor Bouders?
Here. Approval of the final agenda, may I have a motion?
I so moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Member Donahue and a second from Member Martinez. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bouders?
Aye. Are there ex parte communications for members?
No, sir.
Seeing none, public comment for the consent calendar items not on this agenda within the subject matter jurisdiction of the redevelopment agency. Seeing none, the consent calendar, I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion from Vice Mayor Medina and a second by Member Pats. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bouders?
Aye. This meeting is adjourned at 7:54 PM. Time is 7:54 PM. Call to order the City Council of the City of Emeryville. Please note, Madam Clerk, that all members are still here. Take a motion for approval of the agenda.
So moved.
A second.
I have a motion from Member Pats and a second from Member Donahue. Please call the roll.
Let me catch up here. Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bouders?
Aye. Special orders of the day and introduction of the Administrative Assistant Maggie. And Charlie will do the introduction.
Thank you, Mayor Bouders and members of the City Council. I'd like to ask Administrative Assistant Maggie Mahaffey to join me at the podium, please. Some of you may recognize Maggie. She's actually been with us for over a year, but I am very pleased to announce that she has now been hired as a permanent city employee effective last Thursday, February 1st. Up until now... Up until now Maggie has been with us through a temp agency for actually a little over a year since our previous administrative assistant left us at the end of 2016. So Maggie provides administrative support to all of the divisions of the Community Development Department as well as the Planning Commission and the various other committees that we staff. Prior to coming to Emeryville, Maggie has been with a number of different organizations and companies, helping them with their administrative activities. Most recently, she was with MTC, the Metropolitan Transportation Commission. Before that, she was with Zoma Corporation, Children's Hospital, University of San Francisco, The Performance Group, Autodesk, and Ziff Davis, to name but a few. If you speak with Maggie, you will realize that she is from Australia, although she has been here for many years. I won't say how many, but quite a while, but has determined not to lose her Aussie accent. And with that, I'd like to give her the opportunity to give you a taste of her Aussie accent.
Thank you, Charlie.
Hi. I am delighted to be finally a real person here at the City of Emeryville.
You were always real.
Some would say unreal, but yes, that's true.
That's true.
I have to say that during my time as a temp, everybody was terribly respectful. Now, everybody's teasing me, including my boss.
Want to go back to being a temp?
So, I say with sincerity that this is absolutely my favorite job. And Charlie, for all his charm, is my favorite boss. And it is very exciting to work in an environment of respect and care and kindness as we administer to our constituents and the residents of Emeryville with the same care and kindness. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Maggie. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Madam Clerk, do we have any announcements for Commissioner Committee vacancies?
We are going to make an appointment later tonight on this agenda to Papco, and then we recently received a letter of resignation for the Housing Committee, so we are accepting applications for that at the current time.
Thank you.
And we'll make an appointment at a future meeting.
Okay, thank you. So we have a Housing Committee vacancy. Councilmember Special Announcements, reports on meetings and attendance. I will start...Member Pats, do you have anything to report?
No.
Vice Mayor Medina?
No.
Member Martinez?
Nope.
Member Donahue?
No.
Okay, I have a few quick updates. I wanted to update my colleagues on the fact that I had the privilege of attending the Mayor's Conference in DC. Thank you for permitting me to attend that on our behalf. Attended a number of very interesting committees on gun violence, automation in the workforce, and disaster preparedness, and be happy to debrief staff and council colleagues at any point in the future if you wish. We're going to begin a new announcement regularly about AC Alert. And so, in emergency preparedness, the Ad hoc Committee, which we'll discuss a little bit more about this later, but Member Donahue and I had the opportunity to meet with HR and City Manager. And AC Alert is a new system that...new system to Emeryville, existing system related to emergency preparedness, which we now afford residency opportunity to subscribe to to get automatic text and email update alerts related to disaster situations affecting our community and the immediate surrounding area. And the best way to let people know they can get these alerts is to announce it. So I will be announcing it through this year, actually, we decided. So, emergency alert, AC Alert, go online and sign up. Lastly, I wanted to update folks on the Alameda County Transportation Commission. So, the public will recall that in December, the City Council had an agenda item related to quiet zones. And this City Council was really great about acting quickly to give some staff direction around applying for that grant, both this fall, but in the very short timeline for SB 1 money. And had a lot of time at ACTC the last few weeks. And I want to thank all the members of the public who participated in signing the resident community letter that we had. We received, and Andrew or Ryan can correct me if I'm wrong, we received over 300 emails from individuals, and we had apartment managers that represented another thousand units in the city, as well as several businesses, asked to add on to that letter. I'm pleased to report that MTC, which is...MTC is required to review all of the local applications and submit the selected ones of their choosing to the state for approval. And I was notified last week that Emeryville's application was one of the ones that MTC selected to move on to the state for approval. Yes, that's a great thing. So, this is really, really important because it offers us an opportunity to pull down state money. That state money, the future of it, not the current application cycle, but the future of that money is at risk of being repealed through a ballot measure this year. And so, we have a very potentially small window of time to get the money, and we acted quickly. And for those in the public, I did receive a couple inquiries about whether quiet zones would create an unsafe situation, and I wanted to provide some clarity. Although quiet zones imply that this is a noise reduction intervention, it's actually a safety enhancement program. And the Trade Corridor Enhancement Program, which is the SB 1 grant money that the city applied for, is money to make rails safer. There has been an increase of about 50% in rail traffic through the Martinez subdivision of the Union Pacific Railroad through Emeryville over the last decade or so, and we anticipate that by 2030, there'll be another 40% increase over that. And so, the enhancements that are being proposed through our application are to have double-arm gates, other types of fencing, and pedestrian and bicycle safety improvement at those crossings. The federal law is pretty strict about what is required for those things, and so we wanted to be really clear to the community, this is a safety improvement first. The fact that those safety improvements allow the conductor of a train to not blow the horn at every crossing is the added benefit. It's the icing on the cake for that. So, this is not a D...you know, we're not de-safe, you know, creating a de-safe...what word am I looking for? Unsafe. Gee, I was like, that's not even a word. An unsafe situation here. We're actually making a safety enhancement that will improve community safety, and the added benefit is noise reduction. I know there was some confusion about that, and so, staff have been really great. I want to thank Andrew, and I want to thank Ryan in particular at Public Works for a lot of hard work in a lot of short period of time. Amber as well, I believe, worked on this. And together, we acted quickly, and I also have a verbal commitment from the staff at ACTC that if the state does approve our grant, they will approve the 30% match. So, the City of Emeryville will owe no more money out of pocket if we get this approved in early summer. So, keep fingers crossed. And that is a very long announcement, but we determined we needed to make that one. So, City Managers, report.
No report this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Ex parte communications. Do any members have communications they wish to report? No. Public comment for items on the consent agenda or items not on the agenda? Mr. Carpio.
About the noise, it doesn't really concern me, but what...I mean, what's going to be the reduction aside from not blowing the horn? And what are the technical features of reducing the...are the wheels going to be rubberized or Teflon or...I mean, there is inherent noise that is created by friction. And, I mean, what's the technology that is going to be applied for the money that we are going to get, that we hope to get? Because, I mean, I've been working on noise for quite some time, and so, I don't want to say I'm expert on it, but I'm just curious if something new that would come up that I'm not aware of. And so, you know, the latest one is on us, is to provide a pitch and the sequence so that it doesn't affect the human here. All the other animals are affected. But this is what we did with the jet engine on the aircraft. We changed the propeller side, and then, so the noise has been reduced because we don't hear it, human, but everybody else still hear it. So, I was wondering if it's one of those technicalities that is going to be applied. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carpio. Any other members of the public who wish to comment? Seeing none, may I take a motion on the consent calendar? Actually, are there any corrections to the consent calendar? I do have to request amendments to item 10.3, Madam Clerk. There's a reference to an address as 12770. It should be 1270. And there's...Teresa Kalnaskas's name is not spelled correctly, and I can give you that corrected spelling if you want later.
Okay.
Okay, and so, with those amendments, is there a motion?
Yes, I'll move that. With those amendments.
I second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Medina and a second from Member Donahue to approve the consent calendar with the stated amendments to 10.3. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bouders?
Aye. Item 12.1 is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville, appointing a new person to...as community member to serve on the Alameda County Transportation Paratransit Advisory and Planning Commission for a term effective immediately and ending December 31st of this year, and amending the city roster accordingly. Is Yvonne here?
No.
No. I'll open this up to public comment. Any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? Seeing and hearing none, I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Member Martinez and a second from Member Pats to approve, I'm assuming, Yvonne Behrens. Is that correct?
That's correct. Mayor, I'm sorry, if...in just in case Yvonne's watching at home, I just want to say that I serve on the Commission on Aging with her, and we will be well-served with her in this position, so I am going to support.
I'm grateful for that endorsement. Papco is a very active part of ACTC, and so, having an active member from Emeryville on it would be great. So, I believe the motion was made by Member Martinez and seconded by Member Pats. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bouders?
Aye. She's been appointed. Item 12.2 is direction on the potential bond measure for the June 2018 ballot. Susan Shea.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. In the staff report, staff describe why it is more appropriate to present two ballot questions for housing bond measure and parks bond measure. And the City Attorney is here to answer any questions you may have. Tonight, our consultant Lauren Bar from TBWB will discuss strategies to ensure successful ballot measures. Our consultant Melissa Shook from KNN Public Finance will present a tax rate analysis. At the end of the presentation, staff will seek direction from the City Council. Now, I will turn it over to Lauren.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I appreciated being here earlier. It's so much fun from the usual world of taxes. So, as you know, we conducted a feasibility study earlier this year, which kind of gave us the green light for a housing bond measure. We tested a package of message, so to say, but the feasibility told us, the feasibility survey told us that we had support in the community. Seventy-four percent initially supported a housing bond measure for the June 2018 ballot. And so, I got word of adding potential parks, and parks are great. We did not test those parks in our initial feasibility survey, so we don't have a snapshot as how that will do with the electorate. And so, when you consider two different tax or ballot statements about raising taxes, you get into the issue of voter annoyance. And so, we typically say that you should consider the housing bond, typically just because we don't necessarily know what will happen if you package the measures because we didn't test parks. And on top of that, you have to reach a 2/3 viability. And when you start to add two measures, you have two competing measures. So, you would have a parks and you would have a housing bond on the same June ballot. And what typically happens is you have people that support housing bond and people that support parks, and some people that will support both. But we don't know how the viability of the housing bond will be with that split. And like I said, you're at 74% now initially, but if we were to add that, we don't necessarily know what the outcome could be. So, our recommendation is to move forward with the housing bond for June 2018 and consider the parks as well as other measures for November 2018 or a previous, you know, election, whatever you guys choose there. But that is our recommendation. And questions?
Are there any clarifying questions? We'll discuss in a little bit. Are there clarifying questions right now? No. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to turn it over to Melissa.
Evening.
Thanks for having us here. So, in the context of what Lauren just reported on, staff asked KNN Public Finance to run a tax rate analysis from the...for the housing bond measure separate from the parks measure. So, just really here to report on some bigger picture, kind of the cost of the measure, and one for housing and one for parks. Here just briefly on the housing bond scenarios, some kind of overarching assumptions is one, as we're trying to derive a tax rate, is the aggregate AV in the city, which is $5.3 billion, which we got from California Municipal Statistics. And then also decisions around the debt issuance, and that would be in terms of how the debt is structured, the duration or term of the debt, and then also assumptions for interest rates. And then, finally, what the tax rate would look like. Would it be a level tax grade across the measure when the debt is outstanding, or would it be a declining tax rate? Or, in certain cases, this wouldn't be what we would recommend for the city. There have been some entities that have used a increasing tax rate. And then also just assumptions for AV growth. In our analysis, we use 2%. We think that's fair. We think that's very conservative. So, just, there's a lot of numbers on this screen, but just to highlight a few key aspects. One, looking at a $50 million housing bond measure, and what is that going to cost your community and your voters? Assuming 20-year debt, for a 50-year bond measure, average annual tax rate per 100,000 AV is $56.74. What does that mean really for your residential community? The median single-family residential AV is about $257,000. So, then we take that $56 per 100,000 of AV, and on an annual basis, that increases a property tax bill by approximately $146. And then for those of your residents that are living in condos or townhomes, the AV of that is a bit higher than the single-family homes, and so therefore, the property tax bill for those residents would be higher at $183. So, that's assuming a $50 million bond. It's assuming 20-year debt. 20-year debt is shorter, so then it's going to create a higher tax rate. On the other end of the spectrum, we could issue 30-year bonds, and that's going to reduce the annual tax payment of your residents. So, then just briefly, we go on a per AV basis from $56 to approximately $44. Your single-family resident median for an annual tax, property tax bill would increase by approximately $112. And then your residential community that's living in condos and townhomes, that their annual property tax bill is likely to increase by $142. So, that's kind of the spectrum, and that's just highlighting the $50 million scenario. Obviously, as you...if you were to move to $60 million, your tax rate would increase by approximately $10 per $100 AV on the 20-year scenario, and approximately in the same on the 30-year scenario. And then, just briefly, this is just a picture of how we size the bond issuance. This assumes two bond issuance as a level aggregate structure over time. So, as you have level debt payments and increasing assessed valuation, your tax rate per AV is going to decline over time. So, that's when we talk...that's how we get to our average tax rate. Just another example on the 60 million scenario. So, on the parks side, staff asked us to look at a $10 million measure as well as a $15 million measure, all of the same assumptions on the housing side with regard to your AV, with regard to growth, in growth assumptions. So, just briefly, same approach here, lower debt out, you know, lower debt that would be issued. So, you have lower tax rate per 100 AV. On the low-end side of a $10 million authorization and 20-year debt, your average annual tax rate per $100,000 of AV is about $10.46. That translates to an annual increase in your single-family home increase of...single-family home residential community of approximately $27, and then on multifamily, approximately $34. And that's again for the 20 years, so it would be a higher, it's shorter debt, higher tax rate. Longer debt produces a lower annual tax rate. And for the $10 million scenario, 30-year debt, we've calculated approximately a $20 increase in the tax bill for the single-family home community, and for the multifamily home community, approximately a $25 annual tax rate increase. So, that's it. I think Susan's going to wrap up with any questions.
I have a clarifying question, Mr. Mayor.
We have a clarifying question first, please.
So, the annual tax scenarios that you presented, do those appear in the ballot language?
They do, yes. So, and that's what staff is seeking recommendation tonight, such that we could put a tax rate number within the tax rate statement of the ballot.
So, is it...would you be able to explain how it appears? Is it the rate, or is it...
The rate per 100,000 AV.
Okay.
So, for purposes tonight, to better exemplify the impact on your constituents in the community, we pulled the single-family median numbers as well as the multifamily. Those rates would not be put in the tax rate statement. The rate in the tax rate statement is the average annual tax rate per 100,000 AV.
So, the third line from the bottom is what would read on the ballot?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Correct.
All right, one more follow-up question to that. When she said ballot language, that's the full ballot language, not the ballot statement.
The tax rate statement.
The tax rate statement, okay.
Correct.
Great.
Which is in the pamphlet.
Correct.
Yes.
I have another clarifying question. The average and median values that you calculated, that's across the number of houses we currently have in Emeryville?
Correct.
And so, that is not taken into account, it would lower than, since we are building substantially more housing?
Yes. So, what this takes into account is your current, today's current stock. And that is something that we think about as we think about tax rate. It's your voters today?
Yes.
And the state, your community today, which will certainly evolve over time for new residents coming in.
But just to clarify then, once, say, we are expected to have a significant number of new residents out of there quickly?
Yeah.
That will lower the tax rate for everyone, then?
Correct.
Okay.
I have a clarifying question.
Mr. Donahue.
Assess value and market value are two different things.
Yes.
How different?
Significantly, in some cases.
Yeah. I was going to say, I don't...now, I don't have my real estate hat on me, but, you know, it's...we're a prop, right? We're...so, we're in Prop 13, you know, the environment within the state. So, assessed value on a home that was potentially purchased in 1970 may be a lot different than its market value that it will be sold for. Once sold at the new value, that then becomes the new assessed value on that property.
So, when you accumulated assessed value range, you had to look at the aggregate of all Emeryville property assessments to do this calculation?
Correct. This...the assessed value number that we utilized in our analysis is not a value that KNN Public Finance derived. It's a value by California Municipal Statistics, along with the Assessor's Office. So, it's an organization that does this kind of across municipalities.
Are there any other questions? Susan, you want to come up?
We have a list of questions for the City Council. Would you like to go down the list one by one, or you would like to discuss first?
Let's take public comment. So, I think the questions are self-explanatory, but if we run into a problem with them, we'll call you back up, if that's okay?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to open this for public comment. Members of the public who wish to speak on this item have three minutes. Any members wish to speak? Seeing none, we'll bring this back for discussion. Colleagues, what I'd like to do is, I'd like to, before we go into the parks and housing versus housing questions, which are the two at the top, I wanted to see if we could just knock off a couple in the middle there that I'm hoping are a little easier. So, can I just first get consent? Does everybody agree that at the least, there should be a housing bond on the June ballot?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So, for the purposes of that, we need to give staff guidance on a couple elements of the housing component. The first is, does the City Council wish to include authorization for Article 34 authority in the housing bond ballot measure? For the public at large, at home, Article 34 authority is what authorizes the city to create projects that have affordable units in a quantity greater than 50% of the total number of units in the project. So, right now, we can contribute money or land or other resources to building projects that have mixed use but are below a certain percent of units that are affordable. But the city itself is required under the California Constitution... But the city itself is required, under the California constitution, to get authorization from the public to put money into projects that would be more than 50% affordable by unit total. And I'll ask the city attorney to correct me if I'm wrong. The last time the city of Emeryville went to voters to get this authorization was in 1979, I believe. And we got 100 units of authority at that time, and we've used about 87. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so it's been 40 years since we've asked voters to give us authority. We've exhausted most of it, which we did on the 3706 San Pablo site. So we could not use the bonds effectively to build mostly affordable housing for families and working people if we didn't renew this authority. This authority only requires a majority vote approval. It does raise political issues. Some communities don't like producing projects that have more than 50% units affordable, so it's a legitimate question staff is asking us. My question is, do any members up here, you can self-select, do any members up here have issues with including authorization for new Article 34 authority in this measure?
No.
No, so we agree that we will do it. So that's the follow-up question to that, which I don't see here, Mr. City Attorney, but I'm assuming you would like us to pick a number as to how much authority we want.
That's correct. Staff is recommending a range of about 400 to 600, 400 to 600 units, sort of in that category, based on our past practice and what we might be anticipating to build in the future.
Okay, and there's no limit, under California law, to how many units we can put under authority?
That's correct.
Okay, so members, does anyone have a strong preference? I'm happy to make a suggestion unless other members have a preference.
I'd recommend the upper range, if there's no downfall to it.
Yeah, so my preference would be that we begin at 500, and I would be willing to recommend that there be 500 units of authority. Is everyone okay with that?
Seems reasonable.
Okay, I think we have unanimous agreement. There'll be 500 units of Article 34 authority in the ballot measure. Does the city council wish to provide for citizen oversight in the ballot measure language? And I'd like to make a proposal on this. Anytime you issue bonds, there should be citizen oversight of how money that is being paid for, or bonds that are being paid for by residents is spent. These types of oversight committees can be done well, and they can be done poorly. I would like to recommend that, rather than create a new committee of people, I would like to recommend that the Budget Advisory Committee of the city, which does a phenomenal job reviewing the city budget, other finances, be designated as, and whether that's in the language or not, I leave up to the consultants and the staff. But I'd like to recommend that they serve as the citizen oversight committee, and we include that in the language. Does people agree or not?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Everyone agrees? And are you okay with it being the Budget Advisory Committee, if necessary?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So there's that recommendation there. And I think we can answer the last question too, before we go into the meat of it. Does the city wish to select 30 years as the debt repayment term? We saw options for 20, 25, and 30. Obviously, you pay more upfront in a 20-year debt service, but you have a total net debt payment that is smaller. And you pay more in the 30-year selection, but the annual payments that residents make are smaller. You pay more, but you, over the long term. So I'll start with member Pats. Do you have a preference for how you'd like to approach that?
You know, with housing, I like the 30-year.
30-year? Member Medina?
I frankly think, at least considering the 25-year, to lower the total debt service that our residents are going to be asked to make, it's such a significant difference, if you look at the difference between 20 and 30 years, of how much they're going to be paying in total.
Okay, member Martinez?
I'm a little torn on this one. You know, I feel for what people see on their property tax bills. At the same time, as a city, we could be paying up to like $7 million more if we go with 30 years over 20. So you know, this, the city has a history of being fiscally prudent, so I'm leaning towards 20.
Okay, and member Donahue?
I like what Vice Mayor Medina suggested.
25? I also like 25, because I believe that balancing the good points that member Martinez raised, and I agree with member Pats, that for something of a significant bond measure, it should be a longer period of time. Generally, I agree with shorter periods of time for less debt, total debt service. But I think that when we look at this, the total debt service is then under $100 million. I think that that's something that voters can get behind. There's, there's something psychological to knowing that the total debt service is less. And so I would ask members Pats and Martinez, who, who were not on the 25, if you can support 25?
I can support 25.
I can support 25. I just want to point out that one of the reasons that you extend debt out is because of the deflation of the value of the dollar. And, you know, as more people come in and houses go up in value, it really changes the math. So I'm fine with 25, but I just want to, the way large numbers work, $7 million sounds like a lot of money, but that's $7 million, sorry, amortized, over 30 years, the value of $7 million ain't what you think it is.
Yes.
And so that's why you put those out that far. So in the short term, it really does help residents to have a lower payment today, particularly those who are purchasing in the very near future. So those, as long-term, doesn't hit us as hard, so.
And I would add to your comments. I think Vice Mayor Medina asked a great question earlier about adding units. We have, I think, Charlie, correct me if I'm wrong, we have about 1,800 units in the pipeline somewhere right now, right? Between construction and planning and approvals?
Yeah, roughly, that's about right.
So that materially, and I'm seeing the consultant's nod, yes, that materially changes the payments, because a city that has, you know, what? 7,000 units and is going to add potentially 1,800, that's going to materially reduce the cost to residents in the next period of time. So these are numbers will actually go down, barring some sort of catastrophe that doesn't result in them being built. So with that, is agreement for 25 years as a term debt service?
Yes.
Yes? You okay, Mr. Pats, with that one?
I'm fine.
Okay, thank you. Oh, the clerk is asking me to have you use the microphone.
I'm sorry, I'm fine with it, thank you.
And everybody, everybody use the microphone, okay. Thank you for that. Everybody use the microphone. 25 years, 25 years.
And I apologize to the council for using the word amortized. I was chastised for that.
25 years, okay. So I think we've answered the bottom questions. Staff, you satisfied with those bottom questions? Thank you. All right, so the top question is the, kind of the big one, it's the or question. Does the city council wish to place a standalone $50 million housing bond on the June ballot and place a $10 million Parks bond on the November ballot, or a subsequent ballot? Or do we wish to place a $50 million housing bond with a $10 million Parks bond, both on the June ballot? And I'll start with member Donahue.
I think their analysis is worth paying attention to. The only thing that could persuade me is the three of you who recently were elected. If you have some perception into the Emeryville electorate of today that could persuade me to do both, you know, you'd have to work at it. Let's put it that way. That the, so I, you know, my tendency is, no, let's just do the housing bond right now.
Okay, member Martinez?
So I, I think I'm going to take a tip from my colleague, member Donahue, and just ask what, what folks, what your priorities would be for the Parks bond at the moment, if we, if we had to do it in June. Is there, are there pressing issues that we need to take care of? Aside from, I know there's some that are obvious to me. Our maintenance of existing parks and some plans that we've got for updated lighting, for a restroom at Tomusco Creek Park, for instance. But I was just curious if you had some specific thoughts as to where that money would go.
Do others wish to respond to that question first?
Sure. I think we have a very clear vision as a council about what to do with the housing bond. We've collectively discussed it. And, you know, going door-to-door in the election, we spoke to a lot of people. And I think the cost of living in the area, the availability of affordable housing, what happens if my lease expires, is an immediate concern to the residents of Emeryville. There is always the ability to put another bond on if we leave some of our bonding capacity in the future. And professionally, having campaigned on multiple ballot measures for bonds and parcel taxes and that sort of thing, I think there is a value, really, to what our consultant said, of just having a single measure there. It makes it a much easier campaign message, and it's a lot easier for voters to understand, and they can then obtain a more in-depth understanding of what they're being asked to contribute to. And I think that's really valuable.
Okay, member Pats?
I feel like I'm the contrarian this evening. I feel like we should go now. I think the November ballot is going to be a challenging election with a very high turnout and a lot, a lot of money spent on various things. So any message that's out there is going to be a little cleaner in June. I think Emeryville has a history of supporting bonds. You know, to this day, it's the most popular thing, and Emeryville has bond votes. And I think the time is now to strike. I think waiting until November, you, I don't know. I, I mean, I understand what they're saying about, you know, we'd have some split support, but the time is now. I think the economy is as it is, still relatively strong and support for it, and it's just going to be a lot more crowded. And I, you know, the nice thing is people in Emeryville support parks. Nobody ever, nobody, nobody's going to vote against parks or housing at this point, in my, my opinion, other than the 10% of the population of Emeryville that votes against any tax.
Mayor, may I respond?
Yeah, of course.
I just want to remind, I know you're well aware that different people vote in June as in November. And so, and I will also just posit that I, I think that if we had a Parks bond in November, I think a lot of the folks, there will be many more people voting. And a lot of those folks who will be reacting to other things on the ballot and other things happening nationwide, statewide, and want to make their voices heard, I think that will be a time where, frankly, I think that's an easier sell for the parks. But that, that, that may be my guess. I don't know if that's what our consultants think as well, but.
Oh yeah, now we called you for the quiz.
Yes, I.
Come on back.
My presumption is that, well, obviously, it's your recommendation that we would delay a $10 million Parks bond to November, if we were to do it at all. But is that based on giving us more time to get our ducks in a row? Or on the folks who will be voting on that bond and how they would vote?
It's a bit of both. So as we know, June is going to be a bit of a more conservative electorate. Thus, they tend to be a little bit more tax-sensitive. So if you throw two tax measures at them, they're more likely to not vote for both, and thus you kind of miss your two-thirds threshold. And what your feasibility survey told you was that your, excuse me, your housing bond is at 74% initially. So if you add another measure, that could potentially decrease or increase, but without polling and further exploration, we really have no idea what that could do to your existing housing bond, and thus you put both in jeopardy.
And Lauren, when we did that polling, that was likely June voters or likely voters for 2018?
It was a mix of both, because we used the survey to kind of show us which was a better time for the housing bond specifically. And we found that that group, which is the June voters, were more likely than the November for housing.
For housing, thank you.
Member Medina?
In general, I know you did not do the polling for this particular election, but when you put more bond or tax measures on the same ballot, do you generally see a lowering in support? I think adding another one and seeing an increase is quite unusual, right?
Right. Typically, again, with the tax sensitivity, people don't like to pay for things. And if you ask them twice, you get a little bit more backlash than you would one thing. And so we just think that it's stronger for your housing bond to focus on that. That's not to say that Parks won't do great in November. You've got a presidential and a series of other things. But we just find that the electorate is just a tad bit more conservative in June.
And can you remind me of the error percentage?
It's about 5.2.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Plus or minus.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So my thoughts on this, I know I kind of threw a zinger when I asked us to add parks, after we initially discussed this at the end of last year. And, you know, on a personal level, I completely align with councilmember Pats about this. But I have spent time with staff, and I've run ballot initiatives and worked, like Vice Mayor Medina has, on these issues before, bond issues, in fact, at the state level. And the thing that I did was I took a step back, and the number-one priority for me was the housing component. That was the most important thing for me, as one member of this body. And so ensuring that that passes is the single most important thing for me. And I think there is good reason to put the parks on hold for November. When we originally discussed this, I had been hopeful that there would be a way to look at this as an infrastructure bond broadly. And Bond Council worked with the city attorney's office, and I've had a chance to talk to them about the legality of this. And the truth is that, when you do bonds, you have to have a single issue before voters. And it was too questionable for us to put both of them into the same ballot measure. And I think that the legal advice we received was prudent. And I don't want to have anything we invest our time and money in and get residents behind to be questioned later. And so I do endorse doing just the housing in June. I agree with the majority of my colleagues on that. I, I agree with councilmember Pats, though, in my heart, I agree. I think he's right, for all the reasons he said. But I think as a practical matter, that the goal is to succeed on this ballot measure. And if that means we have to break it into a couple steps, although that hurts me a little bit personally, I think that's the right thing to do, because we need to make good on this. And so I'm supportive of doing a bond in June. And I think that's a majority of us that want to do just housing. And I would invite councilmember Pats, do you have any, do you want to respond to any of that? Do you have?
No, I don't, I, I don't disagree with anything that member Martinez said. I, I know those numbers, but I feel we're a unique town. And so.
And I, I really appreciate what you're saying, because I am struggling a lot with it, even saying it tonight, how I feel. But I, I want to make sure we succeed on this. I think it's important that we win this ballot bond measure. And so I think the only other question is whether we want 50 or 60 million. And unless people have a strong feeling, I would like to propose that it be $50 million. Just, do people feel it should be more? Or less?
50 is a great number.
Does, no, no. Does 50 accomplish the goals that we have for this housing?
Yeah, I think that we estimated that 50 would allow us to do as many as 500 units and do potentially five projects in the city. Is that still our belief, staff? Maybe it's other people who, you know, like, we recognize that it's fact-specific, but that that was a range of possibilities. Is that correct?
Chad Smalley, Economic Development and Housing Manager. Yes, I think that's probably at the upper range. I mean, we were trying to be conservative when we're talking about the number of units for Article 34 authority. It's really hard to predict this, because over, the landscape is changing with affordable housing finance. Because of tax reform, the tax credits are worth less than they used to be. We don't have redevelopment anymore. There are other bonds out there, and these other communities, Alameda County, have gone down this pathway, and those sources are there. And so we are really guessing, when we say that, that there's about, you know, five projects, 500 units or so available. Some of this also depends on the sites available and the opportunities that arise.
It's $100,000 a unit, if my math is correct.
Yeah.
Does that sound right?
$100,000, so if you look at the last 9% tax credit deals, about five of them throughout the Bay Area, including, you know, ones in the East Bay, the average subsidy per unit works out to right around 100, 120 a unit. But that range, in those, when you look at those projects, depends greatly on the size of the project and the other funding sources that were available to it. And that was, those are projects that have been built. So the range is from 60,000 per unit all the way up to 250. So that's, you know, it's, we are, it is a very tentative estimate.
Yeah, I mean, I think construction costs in two years, because that's, you know, when the funds will come online and things. So I just, I worry that $100,000 a unit locks us in. Not that $10 million adds that much more per unit.
Well, the other thing that.
That 120.
Yeah, the other, the other couple of things I'd mention to that is, one is by, by doing, you know, we don't have to expend all 500 units of authority.
No, I know.
We can hold on and give a future council the ability to do a project that comes from maybe other resources that don't exist today. So we have that flexibility, I think. And the other thing is, you know, when, when, when we build affordable, as Chad mentioned, the landscape is constantly shifting. And we may spend more on a particular project, because the type of affordable housing it offers is something that we don't want to pass up. So I, I think it's a, I think it's a fair amount of money with the authority, because even if there's authority left over, even if we only build 300 to 400 units with the 50 million, and there's authority for the following 15 to 20 years for the city council after us, I think that that's, that's a good approach.
I think 50 is the right number.
I agree.
Is everyone okay with that approach? Okay, so you want to sneak in and bomb this party?
Staff has asked that we just review the assumptions going into the tax rate for the tax rate statement, just so that we're all very comfortable with what we will be utilizing, you know, going forward. So first and foremost is the base share AV, which. utilizing, you know, going forward. So first and foremost is the base year AV, which you see, well, actually, first and foremost is your, your recent discussion on a 50 million authorization. Then under your AV, it would be a base year value based on the fiscal year 1718 of the 5.3 billion. And then we're utilizing a 2% annual growth factor, which I had mentioned is relatively certainly conservative in the approach and pretty transparent for your voters. The debt structure, we're assuming two issuants, one in the fiscal year 19 and one in fiscal year 21, as projects come online and are ready to go. Also, it's our experience that housing GO are likely, will have a taxable tax treatment, so they will be issued as taxable bonds as opposed to tax-exempt bonds. Therefore, our interest rate assumptions in deriving the tax rate are slightly higher, so it would be 5% for your first issuance and 6% for your second issuance. That isn't to say you're locked in to any interest rate assumption, but these are the assumptions that will be used to derive the tax rate that's communicated to your voters. Term of the debt, it sounds like we're honing in on 25 years. And then we would structure the series of bonds such that you achieve an aggregate level structure. So each year, your debt service, your debt payment is equal, so not overburdening one year over the other. So I think we just wanted to restate those assumptions and just make sure you all are clear, and then we have your direction there.
Not a cameo.
Thank you. And also, I just wanted to reflect back to make sure that we picked up the rest of the direction that you had given us. So, it sounds like the council is also authorizing Article 34 authority for 500 units, and that you would like citizen oversight, and that you would prefer that to be embodied in the citizen, the budget oversight, Budget Advisory Committee, excuse me. And then you're directing that the park bond measure would come forward in the November ballot.
Yeah, and as a follow-up to that, I think we should go through, staff should just focus on the housing bond stuff, but we will probably go back to the consultants to do the appropriate polling in June before we do anything with that.
Okay, great.
Counsel, have anything they want to add to this? No? Okay, this agenda item is closed. Agenda item 12.3 is the city council goals for fiscal year 1819.
I have a suggestion about this item.
You have a suggestion?
Yes.
Please tell.
I would like to continue this to a future agenda, where we could take it and, you know, give it more time.
Okay. Staff, is that something that you, you support doing, too?
I think to the degree that we may get a better quality outcome, given all of the activities and the somewhat late hour, and the fact that we do have a closed session yet to go.
Okay. Colleagues, how do you feel?
Well, until she mentioned closed session, I was like, let's plow through, because I had coffee.
I was going to say, late hour, we're not even at nine, but okay.
We're at 45. I'm good to go, but do we have room on the next agenda?
Yeah, I was gonna, so, first of all, thank you, Member Donahue, for raising it as a, as a suggestion. And I'm just looking at February 20th, and I see a public hearing, a public hearing, a public hearing, four community advisory reports, the smoking ordinance, and then the ballot measure being voted on. So I just want to check if you want to put that on that meeting, we'll have a very long meeting on February 20th, or you're proposing a different date, Mr. Donahue?
It could be in March.
What about March 6?
Um...
Are we late March 6?
Public hearing, Shell Mount Way General Plan Amendment, roof deck hearing for Ocean Avenue, three Community Advisory Committee reports, and ordinance introduction on car share. And by the way, this is why I love item 16, Significant Future Agenda Items, because we can talk about this like this. So, do you feel like March 6 is, that's sufficient? You can do that, fit it on that agenda?
I believe that that would be fine, but what we don't know, and the council members know themselves much better, as to the depth of discussion that we may get into. I mean, if, for example, you wanted to get started and you felt that it looked like this was going to take longer, at any point, we could complete the exercise at a future date, but perhaps it won't take as long, you know, to get through this.
Member Martinez, go ahead.
I just, I just wanted to say, I think it's a good idea to push it off to March 6, if that gives staff additional time to consider how these goals, how amended goals might overlay with our budget priorities and with our CIP. If there's, if there are strong recommendations for us to pontificate on, then I think that it could be a short item. I mean, we're...
So, I want to, I want to propose something for that. So, maybe what we can just do this evening is have a high-level discussion about how we want to approach council goals and not do the council goals themselves. So that way, whatever we prepare for the 6, we're coming in agreeing to how we're going to analyze council goals. Is that okay with everyone? So, that's what I'll propose. So we'll waive staff presentation. And so, everybody has from their packet the fiscal year 2016 to 18 council goals. And the way it's outlined, there are categories, public safety, infrastructure, community development, et cetera, and there are objectives listed. And in reviewing this and preparing for this item tonight, my instinct was that this is not the most helpful way for us to go through this exercise. And I wanted to propose to council a different way of thinking about how we set goals and track goals in the city. And what I was going to propose is that we do a review of the existing goals to see what we've accomplished, so we can report out, yes, those things that we had set before are complete, because I think we need to finish out what we've done. But my hope is that rather than have these very rigid categories, that council members would come with discernible, objective things they want to see accomplished. So whether that's, I want to see a bike lane on Hollis Street in the next five years. I want to see, I know one of the things I'm going to, I'm prepared to bring is action steps on emergency preparedness. And Member Donahue and I have caucused on that item. Perhaps it is, we want to say that the Art Center RFP will be out before the end of the year. And then we maybe come up, instead of having all these things that are more objective and a little ethereal and heady about, like, concepts, we actually have discernible things that are action-oriented that reflect our, instead of us kind of forcing goals into all these categories and giving it like a busy list for staff, we kind of set out what our priorities are as a group. And then we can, we can kind of list a whole bunch of things, I think, and then we can narrow that list down by, well, which ones matter the most to us, and put those in kind of the priority list for goals. And then we kind of have already set like the on-deck list of things to do when we get through the existing goals. And then that way, staff has a lot more clarity and a little more of a narrow focus around what it is we're asking them to do, so they don't feel like they're trying to accomplish 10 things at one time. It's kind of like, hey, get these three things off the list here, those two things here. And I think that would make staff work a little more focused and predictable, and it would also allow us to agree, kind of in concept at a high level, what things we want to see have happen, so that we're all on the same page about that ourselves. Does that sound like something people can get behind, or do you have different suggestions?
Mayor, I think that's a fantastic way of orienting it. I have a question, though. Do you think it would be helpful for us to, for us to attach, like, specific timelines where we think we'd like to see these goals achieved, and so we can also sort things in that way?
I think we can do that. I think what we, what would be helpful is we should propose those things. And I think once we have the list together, you know, if it turns out everybody has a public works request, and suddenly the top 10 goals, Andrew's, Andrew's sitting over there like, oh, jeez. Don't worry, Andrew, we got your back. But if the top 10 things were all public works things, I think...
Resources, bring them up.
Right, exactly. The question becomes, then what realistic, so rather than identify them one at a time, I think we make the list, and then we can talk to staff. So if, we can bring it back with department heads here, so that we can get a full feel of what they're doing, what, what's feasible. So, yeah, I could do A, B, and C, Mr. Mayor and Council, but D and E on this list would, I wouldn't be able to do those and do these other things. That way, we can sequence what things we want to have accomplished as they're coming up. Because I know stuff like, just the quiet zone thing, you know, if that money comes online, you know, between summer and next spring, the two pieces of it, you know, we're hoping to move the Bayfront Bridge along. We have a bunch of things in the queue, and Andrew and staff there are working really hard on that. We can line up the things that kind of go behind it, but not expect that they be done concurrent to it, if that's not feasible. Does that work for everybody?
Hmm.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay, so...
I would also like to suggest that we could have even a more abstract discussion about the future, meaning our, looking at our likely income changes, you know, income that's going down, income that's going up, the kind of people who are likely to move to our city, you know, just like to look at it in, with a perspective of the future in the next, you know, few years. How, what is the future likely to be?
Well, I think we have, on that same meeting, mid-cycle budget review. And although his question goes a little bit beyond budget review, do staff feel like that that's something that they can provide some answers at a high level to Mr. Donahue?
It would certainly seem to be a very reasonable way to set the stage for discussing goals. And I think there are folks on the management team that certainly have some sense of trends, whether it's financial, whether it's demographic, economic, et cetera. So, that does make sense.
Yeah, I would like some of that, because I think we could focus our goals with, you know, the thoughts of, well, here's the trend, what can we do, you know, is that, what's the best approach if we have a more accurate look at our near-term future?
Well, that works for me. So, what we should have probably done, let me open this to public comment, it's an agenda item. Any members of the public who wish to speak to us about city council goals may come and do so now for three minutes.
Mayor and council members, thank you. Thank you for the decision to postpone this idea. I know we're the new kids on the block, but we believe that private and public discussions should be part of the mix in the context of getting some of us from the public sector involved in having the discussions about the council goals, I think is a prudent scenario. Whether it be public safety, or housing, or infrastructure build-out, I think that type of a discussion would really fuel the fire. I know there is no Chamber of Commerce in the city, but most of you know Rob Fong, and he and I had discussions about collaborating with the folks in the business side of the situation and bringing it to the table to have that discussion with you. If you're okay with that, I would like to sort of spearhead that.
Okay, well, this is, this is public comment right now, so I'm not going to answer your question until you tell me you're done with public comment.
I'm done with that.
Okay, so I think that your invitation to have a discussion with the council and staff about ways that we can partner with the business community is a welcome one. And I'm going to ask you to make that contact first with Chad Smalley, okay?
Awesome.
Thank you. So, I think what we need is a motion to continue. Member Donahue, is that your motion?
I move we continue.
To March 6?
Yes.
There's a motion?
I'll second.
We have a motion from Member Donahue and a second from Member Pats to continue this item to March 6, 2018. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Batters?
Aye. Thank you, Member Donahue, for that suggestion. Department head reports. The planning directors report from the Planning Commission, Charlie Bryant.
Wow, I wasn't expecting this quite so soon. All right, Planning Commission held their most recent meeting on January 25th, a little over a week ago. There were five items on the agenda. I would note that Commissioner Thompson had an excused absence from the meeting, so there were six commissioners present. The first two items were study sessions. The first study session was the proposed Adeline Springs project, a 29-unit residential project with four to six live-work units at the corner of Adeline Street and West MacArthur Boulevard. The commission gave direction on that, and a public hearing and decision by the commission is scheduled for their March 22 meeting. The second study session was the Sherwin-Williams Architectural Final Development Plan. Again, the commission listened to a presentation and gave direction on that, and the public hearing and decision on that is scheduled for their next meeting on February 22. Then there were three public hearings. First was a cannabis manufacturing and delivery incubator facility at 6613 Hollis Street. As you may recall, this item was considered by the commission at a special meeting on December 20, along with two others. They approved the other two. This one, they continued. For more information, the applicant provided the additional information, and the application was approved on a six-to-nothing vote. I would note that that item is appealable to the city council, for which the appeal deadline, I believe, is this coming Friday. And of course, if the council wishes to appeal that to yourselves, this would be your opportunity to do that. The next item was the proposed modifications to the Ocean Loft project at 1258 Ocean Avenue to add roof decks. This was a project that was approved a long time ago in 2007 and is currently under construction. The modifications will require city council approval, because the project involves demolition of an existing residential unit, and it was originally approved by the city council. The Planning Commission voted five to one to recommend approval of these modifications to the city council. Chair Donaldson was the no vote on that, and this item is scheduled for your March 6 meeting for a public hearing. Finally, the council considered, I mean, the commission considered initiating a general plan amendment and did vote to initiate a general plan amendment concerning Shell Mount Way to basically keep it in its current location, as opposed to relocating it as the general plan shows. The commission voted six to nothing to initiate that general plan amendment and recommend that the city council approve it, and that is also scheduled for your March 6 meeting. That concludes my report. I'd be happy to respond to any questions you may have.
Thank you, Member Martinez.
Charlie, would you be able to elaborate on Chair Donaldson's objections to the Ocean Lofts modifications?
Yes, she felt that the proposed project was out of scale with the neighborhood and was basically too large. The roof decks, while they will not add any additional floors to the building, they will add to the visual appearance of the height of the building, because it includes some railings, some solid railings around the top of the building. So the buildings will appear to be taller. They're still within the height limit. They're still well below the 30-foot height limit, but they will look taller, and she just felt that was too high. I would note that when the, when, she is the only member of the Planning Commission that was on the commission when the project was originally approved back in 2007, and she voted against it at that time also.
And the number of units, that hasn't changed since council last saw?
It's two units.
Okay.
Right, I mean, the last time the council saw it was in 2007, I believe.
It's a front house and a back house, and they've just added roofs to the tops of the house that are deck-accessible.
They've added roof decks to the top of each...
A full house, yeah.
Each building, yes, that's right.
Other questions, or other, do any member wish to appeal anything that was voted on by the Planning Commission while we're here?
There's only one item that's appealable, because the other two are coming to you anyway.
Cannabis manufacturing.
The cannabis manufacturing facility.
Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Charlie, for that report. Other department heads who wish to report? Seeing none. Future agenda item request, Member Medina?
Yes, I'd like to, as you've probably heard, San Francisco's District Attorney decided to dismiss misdemeanor marijuana convictions dating back to 1975. I would like for us to discuss a possible support letter to the Alameda County District Attorney's Office suggesting similar action.
Members wish to put this on a future agenda item to vote on supporting a letter?
Yes.
Yes. Council, so, Member Medina, can we ask you to work with staff on crafting that letter?
Absolutely.
And so I think that's a short agenda item, so could we place that on the next agenda before the District Attorney comes on March 6, and I would like to her to know that we've done that, because she doesn't get surprised on the 6th. So if we can put it on the next agenda?
What it says.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for that suggestion. Other members with requests? Member Martinez?
So when we were discussing the noise ordinance last here at city council, Member Pats brought up the notion of a possible ban on leaf blowers, so I would like to work with Member Pats as, on an ad hoc committee to craft an ordinance to bring back to council. I would also like to work with staff, not just the two of us.
So, my, my only ask would be, I want to, I'm not in opposition to this request, but I'm very sensitive to the fact that the city attorney has made it clear to me that there's probably not much else that they have capacity for while the bond measures go on.
This is not a rush.
Not a rush.
This is really not anything that has to happen anytime soon.
Okay.
And I should walk back, we're not crafting an ordinance, but we would, we would advise on what staff would bring back to council for us to decide as a body.
I'm supportive of this. Are other members supportive of Members Pats and Martinez looking into that?
Only if I can call it the ad hoc leaf... Only if I can call it the ad hoc leaf blower committee.
How about hot air...
Blowing committee.
Blowing, yes.
I am going to remain silent on that one, and say that I think you have the green light to do that, everyone's okay with that, that sounds good.
Clearly, we need at least three meetings to come up with a name, so...
Yes, are there other members who have things they want to add here? Seeing none, 8:03, this meeting is adjourned. I'm...
I know.